I believe you can do whatever. And not necessarily something that. If we call it, it's dangerous.
A lot of things. It's a little. The receipt. So.
That's great. Tell me, Father, we're just like the great city that you let us live in. We're just thanking for all the staff and all the employees that run this city. We ask you to please continue to bless them, bless us. Ask you to please be with us. We make decisions for this city, make it the best we can possibly do. We ask this from across nine. And.
I'd like to call the September fifth, two thousand twenty-three planning commission to order. Uh, hold that.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Ray Cardell.
Here.
Mark Cloud.
Here.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Red Couch.
Here.
Chris Hussein.
Here.
Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Neil Power.
Here.
And do I have a motion for the approval of the August first?
She'll move.
Uh, first by Mr. Cardell. And. I'm sorry, just to say this word is saying. And I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Austin. Was in favor.
All right.
Any opposed? Next is. The public hearing. The public hearing.
This last legislative session, there was a new act. Uh. A fifty-one, which is dealing with Arkansas data centers. And as a result of that, at the approved by the legislature, we're proposing a couple of amendments for ordinance to deal with digital mining because our ordinance hasn't addressed it in the past. And what we had before is an ordinance admitting ordinance. I mean, in Article five and Article six of the zoning ordinance and the city spring law, it's on the planning emergency. The two items that are being changed, let me start with Article five first. We're adding a new use unit called Use Unit Fifty-four Digital Asset Mining, which is defined as a business, a means a group of computers working at a single site that consumes more than one megawatt on an average annual basis for the purpose of generating digital assets by securing a blockchain network. Blockchain network means a group of computers operating and processing together to execute a consensus mechanism to agree upon and verify data and additional record. Digital asset means cryptocurrency, virtual currency, and natively electronic access, including without limitation stable coins, non可以用 tokens and other digital only assets that can for economic proprietary propriety or access rights or rights or powers. Digital asset mining is an individual who mines for digital assets. Digital asset mining means use of electricity to power a computer for the purpose of securing or validating a blockchain network. This Use Unit Fifty-four will be a conditional use. The conditional use only in an I one industrial district and I two general district. And they would be subject to the amendments to Article Section Six of the zoning ordinance. The supplementary regulations that would reflect a digital mining. A digital asset mining would include operation in a manner that causes no stress on electric public utilities, generation capabilities, or transmission network subject to the commercial design standards and guidelines as provided Section One, twelve fifteen of the Code of Ordinances and subject to Chapter forty-two, Article three, the Noise Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances. That sets it up as a totally separate operation. What it also does is allow it to operate as a in a residential facility as a home office. And the only change being made to the definition of a Use Unit Twenty-nine home office is to add home office includes home digit asset mining as provided in Arkansas Code fourteen dash one dash five oh one. And I won't answer any questions if anybody has anything except if you ask about cryptocurrency, I can't say anything about that. I don't know anything about that kind of stuff. But I can tell you what this is supposed to be if anybody has any questions. We didn't have any way to put it into our system at all prior to this. And we've only had one off, one time that I'm aware of when anybody was concerned with doing it. And that time we didn't have a way to move forward. So this would be an amendment to code. What we need is a recommendation. Well, this is a public hearing. We need to see if there's any comments from the public on this proposed amendment to the city's code of ordinances. If anybody wants to make comments. No, okay, we'll close the public hearing. What we were looking for is a motion to forward this to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Our motion.
Motion to move it forward. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Mr. Compton, okay?
Austin.
Yes.
Cardell.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yeah.
Okay, this will go to council at the next meeting on next Tuesday night. Thank you. Next item, but before I go any further, there are a few items that aren't going to be heard tonight. The first one has been tabled, it is R twenty-three dash forty-five Old Meadow Beast LLC will not be heard tonight. Um, also L twenty-three dash fifty-four Katie's Plaza has been tabled. B twenty-three dash sixty-five Alberto Gonzalez and Laura Fernandez has been tabled. And B twenty-three dash one oh three Thomas and Katie Mary. Will not be heard. The next item on the agenda is R twenty-three dash thirty-seven Imogen May's Revocable Trust presented by Cody Bond and CBI Engineering, Chris Hardy. Do they come to the president? Yeah. That part we still got, okay.
Uh, so we are looking at thirty-six forty-five North County Street in Springdale. Uh, I'm sorry, Chris Hardy from CBI Engineering. Um, the head of home buildings. So we are just looking to go from the current R two zoning to R five, which will allow outdoor displays and sales.
Actually, go from C two to C five.
C five, I'm sorry. So. Um, that's pretty much it. It's just about five acres of property. Uh, we're not keen to be building the entire thing. Uh, just to care unfortunate is already commercially zone. And so he's just looking to have outdoor display of local buildings for sale.
I have one question because I think originally when we talked about it, it wasn't going to go behind the existing building that's there. And you guys decided to include that area?
Uh, well, I, we weren't really understanding that we'd have to rezone the entire commercial part of it from two to five as part of the rezone only, but no, we will only be actually developing as a portion versus a product.
Okay, you can. It can go this way if you want it to, you can rezone or that portion that you want to use as that. If you create a little description that we can go out there and actually plot it on the ground. So if you decide you want to pull it back something before it goes to council, that's fine. Otherwise, okay. You really. Yes, uh, the plan is playing indicates regional commercial use for the area, the zoning place and keeping with the following goals and policies is recommended or crew will promote the viability of older commercial areas as well as new commercial developments.
This will be a, is there any comments from the audience? Any comments from the commission? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote or Mr. Tyler?
Yeah.
Cardell.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Don't be sure to speak up, okay, because this is going to be part of the year. I promise.
Staff will prepare the ordinance to go to council on the sixth. The next item is C twenty-three dash fourteen Taylor and Miranda Drake presented by Taylor and Miranda Drake.
I agree with you.
Welcome.
And this is for Use Unit fourteen in an I one practice. Basically, what you do is putting in a mobile home or a manufacturing. Okay, and you go check out the existing home that's there.
Once my new one is put in and set up, I can move into it because I live there right now. I haven't noticed.
Okay. Uh, the ingress and ingress to the property is acceptable. The street parking is acceptable. Uh, the refuse is not out in one that you will have a residential pickup like you have now. Uh, utilities, you have circumstances of wisdom approval. Uh, there's no screening requirements, no signage. Your requirements are acceptable, the size and shape will be acceptable. The only, um, condition that I would have would be that existing structure must be removed.
Yes, and I plan on doing that eventually. So I get moving the bus.
Eventually is a term that we don't use well.
Oh, Mark.
Okay. So once you get your C of O, what do you think is the timeframe? You could have it torn down with once that C of O was given to you. Did it give you six months too long, too short?
Uh, no, we could probably have done six months.
Okay, what we're going to ask you to do is a bill of assurance that it will be removed in six months after the conditional use. I mean, it's typically of operating these rates. Okay.
There's no C of O.
There's no C of O.
More research utilities.
Okay, then we've got a problem. Um, how soon do you think your, your home is going to be delivered?
Uh, they ain't gonna do nothing till you all get it approved.
And you know how long it takes to get one?
They four months.
Yeah. So that's a lot.
Four months.
Don't have to build it.
Okay, we need to give, we need a bill of assurance. That says you will have that existing home removed in one month, I mean, one year. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay, once you need to come by, this will go to council on the twenty-sixth. Once council approved it, you need to come to the office and sign that you'll ensure. They'll know that they can do the, the inspections for the utilities. And in one year, you gotta have it existing house from that. That work?
Yep.
Okay, that would be my recommendation with those conditions.
Do we need to be present at council?
I always suggest you be there. I'll make the presentation at council, but just in case something comes up that I don't anticipate, you need to be there. Okay. Okay, everybody understand this would be a condition use with they have a bill of assurance of existing structure would be remembered within one year.
Two, four. This was a call for the vote. Call for the vote by Mr. Parker.
But. Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardell.
Yes.
Okay, staff will prepare the resolution goes to council on the sixth. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next item with L twenty-three dash forty-three Jennifer Plaza Mini Storage presented by Hall and Associates. Jake, go ahead. Jennifer Plaza Mini Storage.
Yes.
Stop comments.
You wanna, you wanna tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do here? And we go to the next storm, so we just, just got the control of the. Okay, can you go to the next storm? Okay, tell us what you're trying to accomplish here.
Uh, this is a mini storage, uh, facility in the Jennifer Plaza subdivision. We need a lot of relief on this side, so there's lots of lots of things we don't come to get, to get everything standing. We have a lot of ball on the far east side. And we have a fire lane going through connected through the Forty-Eighth Street over to upset. You know, several variants request just because, uh, this nature of this type of development, there's not a lot of in the code for certain type of development. The nature of you know, foundational landscaping and some of the other items.
Okay, it is because it's a storage unit, but it's still, it's still required to meet commercial design standards. You picked the site with a lot of
what?
With a lot of opportunities for development. Okay, you picked the site, we didn't pick it for you.
Yeah.
Uh, now you do understand that there's no way you can occupy any of this until the road coming from Jennifer Plaza is completed.
Yes.
Has that even started?
I believe so, uh.
It has not been permitted. Okay, there's no permit for it yet. Okay, let's go back to the, can we go back to the drawing? So in the meantime, how do you intend to access this? Because there's not a road there.
Right, uh. I haven't, I haven't, uh. We haven't gotten that far as the, uh. There's no timeline, but they're going to be brought in. We're trying to get this through so we can get the grade from now. I think there was.
Well, you're not going to get a grading permit until we have an approved large scale development plan. I'm not sure you're going to get an approved large scale development plan until we know how you're going to access. So it's the chicken and the egg type situation because this creates a problem in that you don't have a way to get to the site to start work.
In, in our conversations, uh.
And you're not controlling the Jennifer Plaza subdivision. You guys aren't doing that, right? Okay, so you're asking for us to approve at large scales that has a one-year timeframe that you don't know that you can even get to it and be able to build it again. I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm wondering why we're pushing this one so much when we don't have a way to access the piece of rock.
Uh, I was under the impression that during the grading of the road, we just get onsite for, for the grade portion. That once that was.
Okay, but we don't have anything going for grading on the road. Has the road plans been approved yet?
They've been submitted, but they're kind of applied for it from it yet.
Okay. And is that something engineering will let them do is getting ready for it for this at the same time the road is being graded?
We did discuss having a great permit on this site, but we would not allow any, uh, you know, final occupancy of the site until Jennifer Plaza official is filed.
Okay, that's a receipt. That means don't come back and ask, don't, don't talk to us about you need it ahead of time because you have buildings you're ready to, to occupy. Everybody understand that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, who's got the comments on this one? Ron, Ronnie's got, there's some other comments.
Uh, Jeff Pintons.
Yeah. Thank you.
Also, keep moving. Planning comments other than just favor comments, the lighting plan needs, still needs a little bit of work. There are still several spots that don't make anywhere.
You're asking for a variance for the elevations. Can we talk about those?
Yeah.
Kind of variance are you asking for?
So there's three, I'm kind of not a hundred percent sure if one of them actually live or not. Um, one thing that we're asking for relief for is from the requirement to have projections on the faces of the building that are extending to above a hundred feet. And the reason for that is that on this site, we are already really narrow and it's incredibly steep. So in order for us to have grading between buildings to allow for parking and for allowing for our slopes to meet, we really are having to cram all the development into the top of basically essentially the top of this hill. And so adding what would be three feet of projection on both sides of each one of these buildings would increase the distance between each building by six feet and causes us a problem for trying to navigate around the site.
So your hardship is because you're putting too many buildings on top?
Well, it's a part of, it's a part of that, it's a part of trying to utilize the site best that we are able to. Because we end up having a lot of site that we can't use um, because of the slope. So there's going to be a lot of extra green space on the site. It's just that where the development portion of the site is, we're trying to kind of make up for some of the lost ground.
Okay, so what's the leftover property going to look like?
It's a.
It's going to be mowed like a young, like a lawn and have trees and stuff on it. So it's really nice looking open space or is this grown up area that's left over?
Yes, there's, there's going to be landscaping around the perimeter, five foot landscaping. Uh, any landscaping that we lost around the foundation, we, we accounted for and the perimeter and if you look to the east portion, there, there's a tension on them and there's some burning landscaping.
Okay, and you got four more potential buildings for sometime in the future?
Those are actually going to be, uh, just covered parking for like RVs.
And did you give us an elevation for those?
Uh, don't believe so.
Covered and open?
Covered and open, it's whole, it's a.
No power to any of that, so you can plug in your RV to, to while you're there, I mean, while it's there, nothing like that? Because we don't have any information on this.
Nothing contained in the building. I don't, I don't, I don't. Playing the big. Site power.
And this will have no one on site. Everything is done through the gate. Do you have nobody on site on a regular basis?
Correct, correct. And that leads to one of the other variances that we're requesting about the entrances. And it's just because of the way that this self-storage that's, uh, essentially it's just twenty-four hour access to the patrons only that's gated. And then there is no office, there is no public interface. They were requesting a variance from the requirement to have a public street facing entrance.
And you're asking for a variance for no internal pedestrian walkways? No focal points to the point entry on the street? All those kinds of things, no five foot sidewalk along the full length of any of the buildings, any of that, correct?
Correct.
And it's a lot of variances, guys. Okay, that's all mine. Questions, you guys got questions?
Any questions, brother, member commission?
I have a question clarity. So it shows here, there's entrance over Forty-eighth as well. That is this or?
That's emergency access online.
The what?
Emergency access online. It's going to be gated, correct, with the knock box on it.
So that's just for fire, is, I saw earlier.
Is that what I'm assuming? That's what she meant, nobody can go in and out that side.
Just for, just for fires. So as far as access and building, this all come from the other side? And you're waiting on that subdivision and at least put the the, I guess, the grading for that street.
Street's got to be approved and underway.
Right. The landscape and what's your variance against the landscape? Uh, I guess, referring to the foundational landscaping, there's, there's, uh, we put landscaping where we could, but obviously with storage, the storage ability there are doors throughout, uh, so we've got it on the end caps and then around the front.
Can you go to the landscaping plan? What, how, how tall is that retaining wall?
The worst, the worst that it gets is twenty feet high, I think on the south, there's a. That would be cast place walls.
And that landscaping on the south side will then be behind or
Yes.
The wall or on top of it?
So, uh, on the south side, there is a, the wall is at the perimeter of the boundary. And then there is a green space at the top of the wall. And on the north side, there should be a detail.
Well, we don't get everything from the package. On the north side, there's no retaining wall on that side?
There, there is portions with.
And the landscaping is on top of the retaining wall or inside that?
On top, on, on top. There's guardrails for.
Ron, I have any other questions or comments, building, fire, and having engineering? Eddie, you got sent a couple of comments from engineering.
Streetlights maybe do, we need to check the culinary plaque, they think they're already being provided for subdivision. And how will the river area be solidly maintained? I'm just looking for a detail on that. And then the junction blocks at the bottom of the twenty-five percent slope, it's like the handle to hide all junk and then it's knocked down.
Where are you proposing for the sides and the stereo walls?
So it's, all of the sides that we have that are facing the perimeter, so outward facing are all going to be fully brick, full masonry. Um, the, we've provided the percentages as long as, and I kind of got some mixed views on this, as long as the garage doors themselves are not considered as the exterior material, because if they are, they account for more than fifty percent of the facade as is. Um, so we just try to make, meet the requirements of, of the minimums. But by providing a hundred percent on all of those exterior faces, so anything facing an adjacent block, we'll see nothing but gray.
So your north and south end caps will be all brick?
And, and the west facade?
And east or just west?
Yeah, the east side, we've got those covered.
And what were the rest of the building?
Uh, it's the, that pretty much accounts for almost everything other than the garage doors. And then there's a portion that we have, um, that where we're popping up to create some uh, at least change in the elevation of the buildings.
Right.
Um, and that will be a metal panel.
All will be between the garage doors.
Correct.
Really?
Everywhere indicated in what appears to be.
Orange. It's definitely orange, but.
And we vary some of those, uh, some of, there's a few buildings that have, uh, that are conditioned. And so that pop-up returns to kind of integrate our screening in the building. And then in other places where they're not air conditioning, they're just a facade treatment.
Through hiding units behind that, that's right.
So is that just the building next to Jennifer Plaza?
The one that.
How that look?
The one that you're seeing right there is the one that faces Jennifer Plaza. Um, there all the next, all of the buildings will still have that pop-up, but they're different scales. The, the larger buildings that are behind this one have a larger pop-up.
But they won't have brick between each one of the units on all the rest of them, right? Only on the ends.
The brick will be behind, but between the units on all of them, except for the portion where we're extending the pyramid up to create the screen.
On every building?
On every building.
Oh, I thought you were only doing the first one. So that's what you start from the street and all the ones in between would just be no doors with no siding in between.
Uh, no, uh, in order to not have another variance request for materials, we went ahead and break all of those areas.
That, that's cool. It was a little bit confusing because we couldn't, we couldn't necessarily tell from that.
I'm assuming the doors on the or west building, the bin one will be facing in, right? So it's this, I mean, you wouldn't see that from the road, right?
Because. On Jennifer Plaza is just going to see a brick facade.
Right, right.
And that's it with the gate gated entries on the, the north and south.
I saw the landscape around us, I wouldn't be doors on that stuff. What would your, uh, what do you anticipate the RV coverage to be like? Is it similar to this, what, man, it's only.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's just going to be a, like a pre-engineered cover. So it's just going to have metal roofing on, uh, on holes. And then we reduce the footprint of those to not exceed the requirements for us to have different roof lines, et cetera. So that's, that's why we have four smaller ones instead of two larger ones.
Will be single pitch, what kind of roof?
Yeah, it, it'll probably be, I would assume that.
Look like.
So I, I only have, I have two questions slash suggestions because I know that with storage units, we can't, you know, like we can't solve to zero. So I'm worried about what the public has to see. So you got to tell me though, there's something we can do on the Jennifer, uh, terrace side where it's not just solid brick. We can, you gotta, you can add some, some kind of detail like big windows or mural or something on that side. Because there's a lot of variances here and I really only care about what the public has to look at. And that, that, uh, is not very good looking in my opinion. So I'm okay with the entrances and I get this, it's great. Sidewalks between, if the landscape's creating, but I thought, I figured you'd probably throw some big windows, make it look like, make it look like, um. make it look like, um, you know, put some detail on it, you know, more and more, cause you've got the roof pitch thing, I'm okay with that.
Or even if you broke the brick up with another color at the top of that.
Yeah, it's, don't you think?
Yeah, it's a lock to look at.
It's a long stretch of, there's no, there's no like, you know, there's nothing there. So I, that, that's my only thing. And then Patsy's comment about what's the detention pond gonna look like? Is it gonna stay landscaped and mowed and, and weededed and is it gonna stay like that or, cause that's really all I'm gonna go for probably is if this looks like somebody's front yard of their business.
Right, yeah, I, I think, I think from our conversation, this is supposed to be a nicer.
And if you're the area, and, and that, the other aspect of that, that I just wanna make sure that we're considering here is the, the maintenance of that area. I mean, it is, you won't, from the road there, you won't be able to see any of the development on top of the hill, because it is so high in elevation above.
But you will see the detention pond, right?
You will see the.
There's a lot of detention ponds.
And, and I think that they're, they've provided a, um, a significant portion of trees there that is a part of their, uh, preservation. And I, I do believe that their intent is for that to, to be more like a, a land, uh, neighborhoods.
Okay. Well, if you can, if we can commit that and we can get that in the record, that, that would go a long ways. Then what, what, what can we do for the side that faces Jennifer Terrace?
So, uh, yeah, if, if that's a, a condition that, you know, we can do for getting approval, that's fine with me. I would, I'll definitely.
Well, I think you're, I think you're probably getting lucky that we've gotten this far, cause normally we probably would just reject all this, since, cause there's so many variances. So since we've gotten this far, I'm just like, let's go ahead and just say yes and we'll approve, you know, like I'll vote on it, we'll move on, right? That's kind of what I, or you can, or we can, you can do whatever you want to, but.
No, I, I would be fine with doing that, but my, my deal was trying to get masonry, cause it feels, felt like that from the, uh,
I appreciate that.
Design standards, that felt like that was what you guys wanted to have as a space. Um, but I can definitely.
Anything, you know, yeah. You'll come into that, then, then I, I think, I think I'm okay with the other items given that it's a structure.
Okay, so we would be approving it, the variances with a facade chase submitted to staff to upgrade that west front Asian lawn, Jennifer, let's ask more to the edge.
Yeah.
And you let staff do that, you wanna come back? And then we need something to assure that the detention pond is going to be maintained.
That is in the summer, they have to keep it mowed, they have to keep it created.
But not, mowed sometimes just means brush up. We're talking about.
Regularly mowed.
Say manicured or?
I, well, I mean, they're putting sod, I mean, they're putting sod down, so I didn't imagine this, you know, you let it get tall, but let's just make sure.
Okay, I think we've got enough to go into the minutes when it gets out of that. We're gonna sit, come down there and write your citation if you're not taking care of it.
Well, not now, but.
Is that directly? Is that directed at? And then we'll be in the minutes. Okay.
Your name was.
Keith Weir.
So you're with, you're also with help?
No, I'm with, you get an associates on our technical project.
Any more questions or comments?
Very interesting. Is it okay to take those all?
So many, uh, we can take them out, the comments made.
With the facade update provided to staff where they can get large scale approval and then and then attention pond, we have some assurances, put that note on the plan itself to be maintained as a landscape. May, may come up with some words for us, okay?
Okay, this is a call to the vote with those comments. Ask the, call for the vote on Mr. Parker.
Austin?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Hesey?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardielle?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Motion subject to. And the, the large scale motion subject to staff comments. With the motion subject to staff comments, motion by Mr. Parker, who I have a second. Second, I was the clown.
Cal?
Yes.
Hesey?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yeah.
Cardielle?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Thanks very much for giving.
Next item is Chapel Bros. presented by Own Incorporated. Chapel Bro?
Yeah.
Could you tell us just a little bit?
Okay, I'm Lillian Bryant. I'm here with Own. Um, I'm the engineer working on this project and I'm here on behalf of our developer, Sugar Mitchell. Um, we are requesting the approval of our preliminary plat. Uh, this property is located on the northeast corner of Marchant and Kelly Road. It's about thirty-six acres, a hundred and eleven lots. Um, we just rezoned this back June, um, to S F three. Um, I'm here, if you have any questions?
Staff comments? For planning, in addition to standard comments, we suggested, uh, that are ultimate certain names, for Shiloh and Dove. Um, we communicated that to applicant and they've already provided some ultimates. Engineering comments? Showing them unfinished floor elevations to the lots adjacent to the detention ponds and also near the northwest detention pond. I think those got me. There's a couple storm pipes that are showing slopes less than point four percent. So I just wanna know if these sections of pipe are going to change scarrowing off the, like, what I call provide on all the structure details, add triple channel put on, show twenty-foot drainage minute around the pond. Or add a note saying the entire law will be dedicated as drainage use. Add notes to site plan, thing to send to qualify, provide erosion control plan. Add notes to this site plan about stop filing regulations. Is the year temper for construction, provide typical street section, show street light, show street improvements on Marchant and Kelly. Um, show, show the profiles for those street. And add disclaimer statements to the homepage. So most of those we addressed with the construction and I don't have the issues with that. Is there any comments from the audience? Any comments from the commission?
There's just one interested.
No, there are two. There's one, um, off of Kelly and there's one off of Marchant.
And then we'll be doing street improvements of, of, they're having the street. I have a quick question. Try to see with the two sheds, is that?
Those will be, um, those sheds will be removed before we start any kind of construction.
And that, those, that long lot is included with that one that runs on to?
We're hoping to create a easement through there, because we've got some utilities that we're planning on taking through there. Um, so hopefully that will be dedicated to that.
But it's, who's gonna own? Who's gonna own that lot?
POA.
Okay, we need a copy of the POA before it is, before the final plan submitted. We need to know that there is adequate amount of money in the POA to handle any disputes there would be on the front end. To keep that all in mind. Is there any other common area besides this?
Um, just the detention ponds.
Okay, is the POA gonna retain ownership of that?
We're wanting to dedicate those to the city.
And will there be a subdivision sign that will be on common property?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, that needs to be shown on the plan itself as common property. Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a motion subject to staff comments.
What is your subject to staff comments?
Motion by Mr. Hesey. Second, second by Mr. Party now.
Hesey?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardielle?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you all.
Next item is Julio and Josephina Riad, presented by Julio and Josephina Riad. Can you tell us a little bit about what you're wanting to do?
Okay, yeah. Um, there are two things I have to get from my. The variance for the setbacks from thirty to eighteen feet. And the other one is about the variance from face to height from three to six.
I think Nate and Ron worked with him to make sure we got good dimensions, if you'll see the drawing in here, we, we know what we're talking about now. We were a little confused on the, on the distances before, but I think we got that all like that. That you're, we're gone, lost one. Oh, do we have any, do we have any comments on these, on this one now?
Is there any comments from the commission?
I need to raise.
Yes.
Can we take, is it okay to take both of these variances together?
Yes.
Okay, this is a call for the vote. Different.
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote on Mr. Couch.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardielle?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Hesey?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Thank you.
Next, next item is Narra Barrett, presented by Crafton Toll and Associates. If you can come to the podium?
Oh, yes.
And what, and state your name?
I'm Caroline Gardner with Crafton Toll.
Okay, and tell us a little bit about.
Um, we are going in just north of the same club, putting up Panera Bread. Um, and it'll be a one-way drive-through off of Matthias Drive. Um, it'll come off of a private drive on the south side. Um, people will come through the signs, loop through the site. Um, go through the drive-through and move back down to the private road. Um, there'll be some patio uh, seating north of the entrance. Um, got some pedestrian accesses to public roads, uh, or sorry, public sidewalks, excuse me. What's, do we, can we talk about the variance?
Yeah, this is a non-large scale. So you're seeing the variances because this is a the size of it makes it a non-large scale. So you wanna talk about the variances?
If you don't mind taking them in order to, um, it's entrances first.
Yeah, so, uh, the entrance, uh, I believe it was also the four twelve, um, due to being a right lane only. Um, so they would, there was no way of getting out, um, being that right turn only lane. So if they tried to get out on four twelve, it would just leave them back on Matthias Drive. Um, so that was that variant. Um, the second one was pedestrian, I believe.
Yep.
Yes, and that was to the south, um, just with grade, um, and being a private drive. Uh, the entrance on the back was really for employees only to get to the dumpster. Um, so we were, didn't feel a great need for that since everyone's kind of coming from that north side and the north entrance. Um, but we have our sidewalks going up to the north and the east side. Um, the second one was, uh, landscaping for foundation. Uh, they're going to have the landscaping on the south side, just to bid that building in the island, um, having that foundation landscaping, uh, just really looked into that site. Um, and then the perimeter as well, on that very south side, the way they dedicated the uh, cross access even, um, it really didn't give us a lot of route tread, it made us push that road as much as we could to the south side. Um, so I think right now it's about five feet instead of seven feet, um, but we achieve it on the west side. Um, then I think the last variance. Yeah, I need to talk about that one or do you? Okay, uh, yes, the one oh eight. Um, we feel like it's, it's gonna be okay being a one-way in, uh, one-way out. We felt like the separation could be okay and that private drive is only gonna give access to the western lot. Um, so we don't feel like there's gonna be a crazy amount of traffic to where it would be impede on tracks to be, uh, be an issue.
I am hearing.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked. You have to walk across the parking lot and cross the drive-through to get to the front entrance.
Yes, ma'am. And they believe we have sign, signs there is what they're proposing for a drive-through. Do not enter, should try to impede and stop traffic.
You'll have to walk across. You have no choice but to get to the front of that, crossing a dry line. We, we discussed rotating the building so that the drive-through is on the north side as others are being built in that area so that you have more of a an area to walk into the building.
And these, then there's Chick-fil-A. They're both built different, they're both oriented that way. Different than this.
And Burger King, all of those in that area have been done that way, so that you don't have to cross and also gives you more ability to put landscaping up next to the building. And I know you, you need to answer, the answer that has been given. But I'm still asking that same question.
Yes, ma'am, yes, um, it's the most efficient, um, way that they are once for, to achieve all their parking spaces. This is the most economical and efficient way for them to get traffic in and out, um, for customers.
Is it possible that by not asking for one of these variances, we eliminate all of the variances? So by just building it differently, we actually would eliminate the other ones? Is that possible? That, I, I understand that's what their preference is.
Yeah.
But is it possible to shift it and then you don't have a landscaping or pedestrian flow variance? I just feel like these were put in place, and I mean, going down from one fifty to one oh eight, it's a pretty significant reduction to the curb height.
When we tried to orient, they didn't achieve all the parking in the way they like traffic circulating as well. And that's a big deal with them having enough parking. Um, so that's just their biggest issue, Harper.
How many parking spaces are there required to have it? How many do they have?
Forty-two. I don't have it off the top of my head. Here's a.
That's I don't have, but drawing was.
I believe it's about forty-two.
Inquire?
And that's, yeah, and that's what, um, the developer has agreed with Panera, that's what they're gonna.
I understand that. Same just asking for more parking on their sites, normally would be more than what the city requires. I understand that part.
Don't, when, when we're, when we're making buildings that are so trap car oriented, you know, where it's really about how many parking spots and getting the drive-through in, and then we have people crossing them, I just, I just don't really like that at all. I think it just sets up a dangerous situation where people come rolling in off of Matthias, you know, they're coming in on the rear or whatever. Shared drive.
And when you have examples of that, so. Other areas, other establishments in that area.
I mean, I do like the way you're stacking cars. I mean, that's appreciated for sure. I'm kind of like, hey, there's a bunch of parkers. Just seems like there's a better way that we can achieve parking, stacking the cars and pedestrian safety for the better side. And actually, I mean, if you think about, if you turn to build oriented, you can get more visibility, because it's more horizontal to the primary property.
Yeah, and they, and I know, uh, the developer had reviewed it too with Panera and looked at, for a while looked at trying to orient, trying to rotate it and Panera just came back that way. Yeah, and they, and I know the developer had reviewed it too with Panera and looked at, for a while looked at trying to orient, trying to rotate it and Panera just came back that the speedway. And wanted to cite how they wanted it laid out.
But it does result in several variants. Do you want the variances voted on tonight, or do you want to go back and talk to them one more time after you've planned the commission?
I mean, personally, I don't, I don't come both. Just, you know, if I go, my wife likes to live in there and I've got a daughter, two, three of the daughter. And all she is, yes, might be in her.
Yeah, we have four pedestrian crosses. Cross traffic in their site. Like things a bit.
If the variance is denied, you can't reapply for it, but you can appeal to variance to city council. But if it's denied against the council, you can't apply for that same variance for you. I'll ask a question again. What I voted on tonight and you want to talk to the developer one more time?
If we, that was pulling it, achieving tabling it, and then we just reapply for it?
Yeah, because it's already been said once, you'd have to wait to fly.
Reapply. Right. I mean, it sounds like you're gonna favor for it. I don't want to hearing. I'll go ahead and table it.
And, you know, we're willing with staff to sit down and talk to you or your developer in our room to go over our concerns and why we handle it and our locations to minimize the number of variances and the number of places for pedestrians cross traffic to get to the grid. That's our business. That's, thank you all.
Cheers. Thank you.
The next item is Alfredo Rias and Letitia Hernandez, presented by Alfredo Rias. You can come to the podium. Tell us your name. You're gonna have to, we can't hear you with a mask on. Okay, who are you?
Okay, do you have something in writing that you're authorized to represent them? They're both here?
No.
No, no? Are we happy? Is there something that authorized her to represent them? Maybe we check. And the reason we get that is.
They're a minute ago. Fred up at surgery.
Okay, but if we don't have something in writing that authorize you to represent them, we can't hear it tonight. Because we have to know that you are authorized to represent human rights. Sarah, just to check. She's checking to see if we have anything that will be. No. Uh, what we'll do is table this to the, to the next meeting, which will be October the, October first or third.
Okay, third of the month.
First Tuesday in October. Okay, and either he needs to be here or we need something in writing from them, authorize him to represent.
No, she can hear it all later, but she was.
Okay, we can table it for later in the meeting. If she's here by the time we get to the end, we can adapt. We're not going to hold up the meeting and put up any stupid shots.
That's fair.
Okay.
Fine, thank you.
Next item is Tan Properties LLC, presented by John Tan. Mr. Tan? Could you come around?
Hi, I'm John, and I'm here to seek approval for reselling from C2 to SM2 of property at four five oh seven Johnson Road. Thank you.
Step on. So good. What are you, what are you intending to do with this piece of property? Turn it back into a single-family home?
It's just to lease now. We have been not leasing for more than a year.
Okay, but are you gonna lease it as a single-family home?
Yes.
Okay, in order to turn it back into a single-family home, you're gonna have to remove some of that concrete out of the front because in a single-family home, you can't, more than forty percent of the front yard can be paved, and it has a lot of paving in the front. Do you want to do that?
A lot of money.
So do you want to withdraw this request for now, or you want to table it?
Just withdraw.
Okay.
Any other other you give or any option?
Well, anytime you go to a, from a commercial to a residential use, you can't have all the front yard paved.
Oh.
So you're.
I thought it's better to have on your pay.
No, the orders can only allow you to have forty percent of the front yard can be paved as a single-family residence. Now, I don't know if you, I don't know any other options. I don't know how the buildings divided up, if there's any other options available, but if you want to take the parking, the concrete out in the front, you can do that, and we can do it as a two. But if we resign to SF2, before you can occupy that parking, you have to go, that concrete is still white.
Okay, how about the residential office for that?
Well, again, it can be an office with paving, but once it goes to a residential use, you can add forty percent of the, of the front paved.
Forty percent of the backyard or just the front?
Just the front.
From?
Because it's got plenty of parking in the back pave as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're trying to lease it?
Yeah, for us, we just want to get income. We are paying.
Yeah, you're trying to, okay, okay.
For more than a year, it's more than ten thousand.
There, we could get you a, we could get you a list of approved uses in a C2. It's a C2?
Yes.
We could provide you.
He has that list.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have the list of everything that's approved, that's already approved. So that's where I'll start.
Normally, it's kind, we're turn that back.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's kind of variable, but we just cannot pay tax and insurance just like that. See, that's my main reason to come back. Yeah.
Yeah. It's your choice. If you want to resign it to SF2, and you know the conditions you have to meet.
Okay.
You want to reason, you want to continue with the SF2?
No, we drop, we drop us.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for doing.
Next item is tacos L when passed for. Presented by Maria Jamela Ramirez. You can come to the podium.
So we are here today to see if we can get permits for a food truck that was at work. Well, they'll have enough to get food and they've got own food. They've already met with all the utilities to get that going. And there's going to be a free parking spot. To table. And it's also a little bit of lighting.
Okay, I mean, you said you met with all the utilities?
Uh, they, they spoke to, uh, where the grease and water disposal is going to be in Rogers Utilities. So they asked us to get with them to get, I guess, like their approval.
Okay, you, you will have to have something in writing from Rogers Utilities before we can let that go. So that they know that you're, you're.
Disposing with.
Right.
Yes.
And the, the picture of the trailer that's sitting in the yard, where's it, where's it sitting now?
It's not sitting there. It, there's, they're waiting for approval before they.
Okay, and, and have you, you've talked to Rogers Water?
Yes.
And they will give you something in writing?
Yes, well, they said, uh, the.
Okay. Um, the ingress, the, in egress is acceptable, the ostrich parking and load is acceptable. The refuse, you have to have fresh containers on site. Can you show those? Utilities, you're not going to be hooked to any utilities, correct? You're gonna operate off the generator. You, you're talking about water service, Rogers Water Utilities, okay? Uh, the sign will only be what's on the food truck itself, no additional signage. Uh, the size and shape is acceptable. It is generally acceptable with the following conditions. Parking and loading areas have to be identified, may now operate between the hours of ten PM and seven AM. Maintain onsite a minimum of three parking spaces designated for their use. If a health certificate is required, display the health certificate in a manner visible to customers. No obstruction of pedestrian or motor traffic. Vehicle, motor vehicle traffic close, no vending upon a public way. No sound device that produces a loud and raucous noise in violation of the city ordinance or violate any other city ordinance as a connection with a vending operation. Keep vending sites clean and free of paper or refuge of any kind generated from the operation of their business. All trash and debris accumulating within twenty feet of any vending stand collected and deposited to a trash container. Submission of approval gray water disposal by Rogers Water Utilities and submission of approved bespoke method approved by Arkansas Department. Those are the conditions.
Any questions from the commission?
Do they live in Rogers?
No, no, the restaurant that they're using is, they're, they're, they have a good friendship.
They're in Rogers?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna take the food truck lease back to that restaurant?
Yeah, we were, we were quite surprised Rogers being allowed. And you're getting water from this rock? You're filling up your freshwater tank in Rogers and you're taking disposal back up there too?
Okay, that's another call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote on this, or Austin.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes. Staff will prepare the resolution. It goes to council on the twenty-sixth. I would suggest you have that. That from Rogers Water. Thank you.
The next item is review of conditional use for Arkansas JRD Church, presented by Annie and Carter.
I'm gonna actually present this one. If you remember, we had complaints from the Joseph Prophecy, the violation of the conditional use and they were using more parking than they were allowed. We were given information from the Prophecy that they had been given a notice of eviction from that location in order to, which means that the conditional use goes away because it is to that business at that location. I spoke with them today about the idea. If they want to start all over, they're going to have to file a new conditional use application and address the parking situation because that's the biggest issue. It's a parking problem. Y'all understand why? Tell me. Okay, because we had people parking all over both lots and staying longer than they're supposed to. So how would you propose to take control of the parking situation if you stay at that location?
Go back to the church. It has to be.
Okay, and that's well, well and good, but that means you've got to monitor it and not let them park in the wrong places. Because there is a restaurant that's adjacent to there. There's actually two restaurants in that. They were having problems with that taking in. So you have to submit a new application and the property owner has to sign it. So as, as we know of right now, you're being evicted. So that's gonna have to be canceled and you'll have to come back with that. Notify the adjacent property owners again. I can tell you, did we not move? You're gonna have a challenge because parking is going to be a problem.
And she all those buildings are all church. And it's trying to park in agreement, etc.
They did, yes.
For the restaurant.
But you were parking all over the restaurant property and all over all those other spaces when you weren't allowed to. That's been the problem for quite some time. Okay, so you need to get a new application. You need to have, the property owner has to sign it because we have to know that you can go back into that location because what we know now is you're being evicted. And parking is going to be a major issue. Okay? Yes. Okay. Understood?
We're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we need to? They're gonna have to resume.
Next item is Hamilton Orange, based on three, presented by Engineering Services.
Thank you, Brandon Rashal, ESI. Developer here. This is a replat of recently applied flat, average grade on base two, three. Minor adjustments and adjustments to kind of make everything fit together better.
Okay, the final plan has been filed, but there are no billing issue, billing permits issued because the set, the list station is not operational. What do you expect to be the timing to make that list station operational? Right, it's up to the foundation. They can't go beyond the foundation until you can get a water meter set. And you can't get a water meter set until the list station is operational. So what's the timeframe on the station?
They had a final inspection this morning. I think there was one remaining item.
Good, so we're making progress, is what you're telling us. Okay, so now we're replating the subdivision to change the location of some trails. Okay. Ron, you wanna, where's Ron? You want to go over your comments?
Can y'all hear me fine?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. One of the comments is, is there approach access for lots two thirty-four? Response back, let's see, approach access between lot twenty-seven five, one seventy-six. I did not see paid access for lot two thirty-four, proposed trail between lots one seventy-five and one seventy-six. But it stops near lot two thirty-three. Any proposed connection from trails to parking area? I think there is none. Pedestrian access needed to parking at the northeast corner of the subdivision. Picnic tables in that be the northeast corner, maybe access of eighty-eight accessible. Area where picnic tables are stated to be placed, steep. How's this gonna be accomplished and how will this area be used as an open common space? Need to label the common areas. What will lot two thirty-four be used for? Lot two thirty-four, we told it's a green space, common area of being used or recorded in the documents. And the comment is, is how is that green space, common area gonna be accessed? We provide audit date and signature lines as well as the notary date and signature lines. And show which components for outside payments.
Okay, but, but previously, there was a, a trail that came down by such beside the list station that would go into the common area in two thirty-four. And that's not because it's conceived. You can't do that anymore. It's pretty steep. Okay, so one of the options was to bring an access that was coming up there where that one is supposed to go to the north and down through there to access. But I don't see approval in that. What happened? Have you access lot two thirty-four in this common area for the subdivision? How do you get to it?
Technically, lot two thirty-four has access to Seagull Street.
That where that trail goes through.
Yes, that yellow.
Okay, but can you actually get down through there to this behind those lots? Once you add a trail to it? I thought that's what we were doing. I thought we were adding a trail that were both directions. So you can access the green space to the north and access the green space to the south because that's part of your document that has that as an accessible area. And right now you can't get to it. When you come to the north, the picnic tables are on the, in there, I think, from that trail all the way over to Cleveland. Is there paths for that where you can get to it or? There's some terrain issues out there, right?
There are.
And you're not telling them how this is gonna work. Basically. You have the parking way there. And go back to the you see where the parking lot is area. So you gotta come down behind those blocks to get down to this area and get a beer, right? Now, it's down to the bottom. These houses are all built, are they gonna have walkout? Uh, basements on the backside? No. So you're gonna level at least one of those lots and the houses are gonna be up here, the common areas, right? So how do you get from that up here to this down here? Without a trail coming through here? Because before you were coming across by the list station and you going in that direction, what happened to that trail? You go back to the previous one? Well. There's an access. That's my concern. And that's what we're on the subject. And that's what we're on the subject. How important is that we, uh, can we table this angle back and look at those areas and simply make sure something? Moves, I mean, you can move forward with the existing final plates you've got to get your building permits and move on. And this replat is really just to do these trails across through there?
Yes.
Keep in mind, if there is a trail that goes through there, you can't put air conditioning units in the way. Got all that covered because we had that major problem last time, yeah.
What kind of spacing is that between the, the lots there, the proposed? Get down to lot, whatever, two thirty-four, what kind of spacing is that?
Well, right now, you can't get from the top. But the utilities, it doesn't have a trail on top of it to get down to that bottom of that lot?
I think he's just asking how wide.
There's no stairs that go down there, there's no cutbacks, there's nothing to get you from those houses at the top to the common area. That was part of this PUD to actually make it usable common area. Especially if those lots are gonna have.
Regarding the picnic tables, uh, I think that's easy enough. Add a sidewalk connection. And street, every lot that is. Parking, the tables, go pretty close to the.
But when you use that trail that come up between lot one seventy-six and one seventy-five to go north to that. Can you get to the picnic tables from there?
No.
You kinda dropped off into that area, what's the point of that trail if it doesn't get to me here? Before we replat this again. Can we address those issues? Can we table this tonight?
If any questions, we can ask.
Sure, you can ask a question.
So I live at that house right there. Right, where that, that trail was being built?
Can you state your name?
Brennan, strange, I live at one nine three three, I was in. And I talked to Ron, I wasn't aware that it's my.
His piece of property is just the east of the top. So since they've torn down all the trees, all we've done is chase people off of our property, people that have come in to steal. Like our stuff in our shed, our chickens. So, to put, you're putting a parking trail right on my fence line, so it increases the number of people that are gonna come into my property. Is there any way that a trail can go out front of the homes? Why does it have to go on the fence line, there's only ten feet there anyway?
Well, we just table the job back and looking always issues.
I mean, I have watching county sheriff's office over there like once a week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys noted that too. Are there any other questions? The next item on the agenda is railroad edition presented by Blue Crane and. Or I E Engineering. This is gonna be the large scale that goes with two oh three east in my hotel, all the stuff's gonna go together. Who wants, who's gonna be first? Bernie's going to be the spokesman, huh? Okay, let's start with the replat, let's go to, there's, how many lots there, we're making the end one?
Uh, I think there's six lots on our, or one looks integrity, yeah. At the area that needs to be vacated.
Yeah, the alley has to be vacated through a different process. It has to go through the city attorney's office, they will set up a hearing with the. City council and then it can be vacated since you on both sides of it, okay, then we can put it on the same replay.
Yes, that was the.
Okay, okay, that's.
We'll do that separately, this is just for the combination.
So you're putting all the lots together into one, one lot?
Yes.
That makes it much easier. No more property lines that we have to worry that, where you are and within the building, okay?
I believe the eastman's in place for now and then.
Okay, I would suggest we do a. Do we have any other comments on the, on the combination, flat combination?
No, only under comments.
Okay, so if we have a motion to approve the replat submitted to staff comments, then we got that one taken care of. Second, brother, you're confident? Maybe you didn't miss yet, okay.
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardielle?
Yes.
Plout?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Isany?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Yeah, we got an easy partner, now let's go to the, um. Large scale development plan.
That shows the hell building along the. History. On the property line and we propose a five-story building that has about ninety thousand. Um, sixty, but it's set back, the, the upper stories are set back from the property line to.
All that stuff needs the form base code, this is the new color palette.
At which the runner-in came in time, but.
It's closer, it's not dark like it was.
Bottom and cambered on the top, with the, the center area will be a darker, a dark bronze metal.
Not the dark like what you originally saw. Um, so let's talk about, um. Deviation of the parking requirements, let's talk about what that is, I mean, first of all, are there any comments on the hotel itself? Other than the deviation requested. Okay, Kelly, do you have any?
Got a couple of engineering comments. Trees need to be added to the landscape island on Anna to be consistent with the street. An additional landscape island if needed, streetlights need to be in the sidewalk. Like the existing lights along Anna, it's like right at that ribbon on the sidewalk and then submit the what they call.
More trees, lights next to it, okay? Okay, now let's talk about the parking deviation, no, actually, it's a. Oh, yeah, it was deviation, it's a deviation.
Yeah, it was the, the deviation parking setback, it was supposed to be thirty feet.
Okay.
And on your south side.
Okay.
On the primary road and on the side street.
Okay, what is, what is it now?
Well, it is basically zero because we're moving out. Close to the, we've got a sidewalk right there on the south side, so. You don't have a room space between the.
Okay, on the. South side along Meadow Street?
Yes.
Okay, and that's to get the adequate number of parking spaces on the side?
Right, we'll lose twenty-four spaces.
We can't lose twenty-four spaces in downtown Springfield for this, we need to keep the parking spaces, okay? We, we worked so hard to get a parking problem. We wanna make sure we continue to have a parking problem, but not just make it worse, okay? That's what we got in mind, okay? Okay, then varies for landscaping, what are your requirements, again, landscaping on the south side?
Well, the landscaping shows an influence. Again, and, and the purpose for it, it says is to keep lights, headlights. From the right away, but we're proposing that perimeter parking, so essentially you are creating that. And a benefit again is the additional.
Okay, and then the variance for the distance between the curb and the intersection from forty to thirty two?
Right, and that creates a straight entrance to our crash dumpster on the other side there. And, and, and out on Meadow, so it improves the flow of the traffic into the site. Instead of creating a little. Turn that you could have navigate around.
So it's thirty-two feet instead of.
Thirty-two and seven.
And we, and I know we discussed the dumpster location over and over and I think we got the best place we can. With the dumpster unfortunately, and it has a lot of landscaping around it. And it will have proper screening, because what we don't want is that bad smell and look when you come down the trailer, you guys keep that in mind, right? That means empty it quite often. Everybody shakes their head yes, okay?
Yeah, I don't want it close to the restaurant.
Yeah, we know, we don't wanna close to the trail either, okay, guys, keep that in mind, okay? Uh, what else do we have? Um, any other things I'm missing, guys? No, questions, you guys have questions?
What's the color of the building?
The, the light base is a white brick. And then above that, all of the, kind of the gray, really shouldn't be gray, uh, is a buff brick. Um, so I'm trying, I, I wanted to be more like a classic building, I don't, I wanna use. A, a color palette that was just going to. It thoroughly fade over here, like something that's more meaningful. And then the black, over the black area, that's going to be metal panels.
And what color is that, Bobby?
Probably a dark bronze.
And then still have the mural panel on the corner on the inn next to the trail.
Yeah, so the one along the trail, I would like to do something more of a three D art, like a abstract biker. Because we're right on the trail and I think it'll be nice when people come in, I can light up some sort of a. A wrought iron piece that we can attach to the building, that's probably thirty feet tall, need to be.
And then there's no panel on the commercial street side? There's no.
And then, no, I, we do wanna do something there also.
Okay, to get, not the same kind of thing, yeah, okay. The, all the air units are hid by the parapet walls on the top? That little box on the top is your elevator shaft, that's.
Is there, do you put the signage in here for the?
They will have to submit their signage as a separate package, but. There's not, you're putting signs on the building itself, it's not going to.
Yeah, we're gonna have several signage, one would be where the entry is, probably on the very top, right, just right above the parapet. Or on the dark area, so that's gonna be the hotel, I think we wanna do some restanding letters on top of the empty canopy. And then for the restaurant, on the, uh, on the west side. We're gonna have to sign, I would want that canopy too, and then on the other end, and there'll be a small detail, so they'll get some signage.
And the restaurant will be next to the bike trip.
And it has, and the patio or the terrace is part of the restaurant. And the way we have it graded right now, it's going to be the same level as the.
It's gonna be sixteen something.
What's that?
Sixteen something, sixteen something, cause it's mile sixteen. Sixteen something, sweet sixteen. I don't name restaurants, that's not my job.
Also, all the, uh, all the deviations make sense to me, the only thing I would say is that anywhere you can help us out with shade and trees. You know, like some of these islands, you got one tree. There's two in there, but walking around downtown, that's just, you know, we just don't have a lot of, like. Got trees shading the sidewalk, so anywhere that you can do that, that's. Given the foundation, you know, some of the stuff we can't do on.
Are you planning on buying circle apartment?
Me, so it'll be on the southwest corner, right by the, uh.
Go back to.
Outdoors, outdoor terrace.
You go back to the site plan and.
I think we have two there, one is by the entrance over here and one is.
I, I see it now, thank you.
There's a lot of things to see on there, some, some of those things are gone.
Y'all thought about it, Greenwood, with the setback, since there's so much hardscape around this building, solving some of the property up. Using that first floor setback. You guys thought about that at all, I'm just curious?
You know, we tried doing that for the department building across the street and, um. That was one of the first thing we had to cut out our budget, we had just. Too hot, prohibited. But yeah, I mean, we drew, that was the first one, let's put a terrace up, there's two or three roofs.
Love to see some softness.
Test ones, some new ideas in downtown Springfield.
But the new runering, okay, this is another reason why we didn't share the runering, the new runering actually, so where that black metal is, but the. For the, where the, the two bricks hits the black vertical, we're going to do balconies for all of those suites there. And they're going to have a, um, a planner, so that would have more of a greenery that will come down that wall.
So what's the seating capacity for the restaurant, because? I don't, I don't know how much you planned for like occupancy rate and stuff, but with the parking, one twenty-nine rooms. One oh seven parking spots and then with the. At a restaurant, I know it's gonna be, like you said. And strength from a parking perspective, how big is the restaurant?
The restaurant now is probably twenty-five, twenty-two.
It's the whole thing with the kitchen and everything.
That's all that, I mean.
Well, you know, parking is something the downtown master plan identifies that we need. Some parking structures and these are the kinds of things that help drive that. Need for and the ability to put together projects because we have a bigger need for parking downtown, so we've got to make more. Addressing parking on a bigger scale.
And, and one, I'll speak to the parking a little bit, I'm Jay Alexander, I'm with Windsor Auction Company. Who, um, developing Blue Crane, the development, we're a jail developer. And we have done studies on our portfolio, which are urban hotels. And about, we get about seventy percent. Of capture rate of those staying in the hotel have a call. So you'll have people that, um, three of us are staying in a hotel in Rogers tonight, for one car. Uh, some people on Uber, so, and that, and that seventy percent was probably six or seven years ago and that trend is going down. So even if the hu- hotel sold out, it may not be one hundred and twenty-nine parks, likely. So there's a little relief there.
The twenty-one C right now is only at twenty-one C, that forty percent parking. So that's being used, so we still have sixty percent of it that's provided that's not being used. And the motto, which is a caution, the ledger has no parking.
We're, we're not quite at the same level. Yeah.
Twenty-one C, it's only forty percent, we have under parking. For that whole town, because people are. That's when they fly in that Uber, right?
Well, we have a lot of people coming in, it's like, it comes through downtown, it's part of those ones. I, I, does anybody have any other questions, I, I think I got all of mine. Okay, we'll get to questions in the, in the parking lot, in the audience, and who's second. Anybody else? Okay. You have a comment?
Not wanting to have any value work, I think so, Phil, because if you got one hundred and twenty-nine rooms. Where the people are still working, the restaurant. I have a business right across the street, it's on the corner of Innes Street. There's no parking right now. There's no drainage out here. Well, I'm concerned, anybody just drove down there to see my yellow.
We all are very aware of your drainage problem and we're gonna address that, I mean, we're, engineers have been looking at that quite a bit, we're gonna address that as things, as things move forward, yeah.
But I'm concerned about parking as well, along with all the other businesses on the industry.
We got it, we gotta address this parking at a bigger level. A parking garage is really what we need to get. You gotta get out of that quickly. Which comes first? Which, which comes first, the parking structure or the kneeboard, and you can't find this one to get the kneeboard. But then you're a little bit behind, so always, we're always playing catch-up, but we are very well, well aware of the parking. Problem and we're talking with those that we can to get involved in doing some kind of parking structure in downtown Springfield, in that area to address that.
I've known spots that you counted of, I said.
Oh, well, the majority of them are behind, how many are in, actually on the side itself?
Seventy-eight, we got seventy-eight on, on site and twenty-six in the rooms, there's one oh seven.
Yeah.
All those twenty-six are current and full of cars every single day we go to work currently.
Yeah.
So where are those people?
Well, we are actually adding some along commercial, that's not current.
Yeah, and right now some along, Michael, our metal group that are there now.
Yeah, there's no parking on our side of Meadow right now, it's on commercial.
And we're showing those as some additional places to go there to do it, yeah.
I'm a hundred percent, I'm not trying to be.
Yeah.
I'm a hundred percent for recruiting downtown Springfield, this is the best stuff that's ever happened.
Yeah.
We, we have. We, we have a firm there for thirty years. We're not going anywhere, we don't plan on going anywhere, we love it. But parking is the single worst, parking and drainage, because right now drainage is the number one signal, most important factor, because when you build a big apartment complex across the street, all the drainage goes off that whole entire block to the one corner right in front of our front door. And we flooded three times, they did a re- remodel of Emma downtown to open up Innes Street, because they took away the other corner drainage right there on our corner, I'm, I'm just bent a little bit, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
But, but this needs to be addressed in all of this plan, I mean, I agree one hundred percent, bring a hundred, bring all these people downtown, bring new restaurants downtown, we needed this forever and ever. But we also need to address all the other Innes.
And I can tell you, the engineering department is very tuned into that, we have a city engineer and engineering staff that's well aware of that issue, and we're gonna see some different kinds of things happening. But we can't fix it all overnight, we have to a little bit of time, but we'll get there. Uh, any other comments or questions? Yes ma'am?
Uh, one thing that I don't know, if you folks have any thoughts in the excursion range that is across the west. And to the extent where people come distances to buy it, um, that potentially, we believe that they can send you such a part, I don't have the answer for you, obviously that's
But those are excursion trains that are a one day trip?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, we would like for them to spend the night in the hotel and come and ride the excursion train, I think everybody would like to see that happen too. So those are issues we're just gonna have to work through as time, time goes on.
Well, they have constantly parking at their own ways, they have to say if they were telling us before.
Well, yes, but not overnight, so they would be saying, if we tell them parking.
Well, they've got spaces in the back for, for parking, you know. One of the things we talked about, that we've been concerned about, is the people who live in the apartments need to use the parking that was in the back for the apartments, because they need to be parked in back, they are not, people are coming to use the, say, eat the restaurants and that kind of stuff. I don't know how we talked to union about it, I know they talked to management, we just gotta work on that as we move forward to make sure everybody uses the parking spaces that are supposed to be used. Ma'am, could you tell us your name? I'm sorry, Karen Crest, C A R U. And your name?
Jeff.
Jeff, sorry, I didn't get that then, I knew Karen was, I have to ask the name there. Any other comments, any other questions? Okay, do we want to take the deviations and the variances together? Okay?
Sure.
That is a, talk for the rest, talk for the rest.
Talk for the rest.
Talk for the rest, but after talk time. And kind of figure out where we are. Here we go, okay. Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Count?
Yes.
Isai?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
That is for variance, correct? That's where, the variance and the deviations, all those together. Now we need a motion and second, second subject to staff comments for Lawrence.
I saw motion.
By Mr. Cloud, sent it by Mr. Tyler. Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Count?
Yes.
Isai?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Thank you guys for coming, I tell people in three years, you're not going to recognize this part of Innes Street anymore. What we've been working for for the last, I can say twenty five plus years, I've been doing this a long time, so it's good to have these kind of things moving forward, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Let's do the rest of the world, listen to the rest. Okay, the next item is N W A Steel presented by Engineering Services.
This is a basically a parking addition on our side of the existing building, they're wanting to pave so gravel parking for employees.
Okay. Is your is over? Okay. You and I had a discussion about the the waiver is for master street improvements on East Cameron Line Road, you don't want to have to do any improvements for the public street that goes along with this or the north side. He and I discussed the possibility of donating the right of way for that to be able to put the entire street on your side of the street, is that what you have shown on there?
No, we only have half of it shown.
He and I discussed the possibility of him donating the, enough right of way to shift the street to the entire on this side of the property, because if we don't, we're, we're gonna have a problem, because there's houses on the other side. With the understanding that maybe his parking could remain gravel for a timeframe until we get this designed with the bill of assurance for company, he talked to you about that?
Yes.
Okay, he's not here. So you're not in a position to address that?
Say that again.
We would support the waiver of doing any of the street improvements this time with dedication to the full right of way, with the idea that he doesn't have to pave that parking for at least two years until we know where we are with the street. And I know you didn't ask for a waiver of pavement on that, because we're gonna pave it, but that could be a little bit consideration, because it doesn't make any sense to pay for that, and then we gotta take it out of there. If we're gonna move forward with it in a couple of years. With a bill of assurance in two years, we would, we would look at it to see how far along we are with this with the street project, and then in two years, he may have the way and pave it, because we're not pouring at the law, or something happened, can you, is that okay with you? Okay, if he's wanting to do a bill of assurance and we don't have to go to council with this, as long as we all understand that's what everybody's gonna do, is everybody good with that? This is on the waiver? This is on the waiver. This is on the waiver, he will do a bill of assurance for two years. With the understanding that he's gonna dedicate the full right of way for that two year timeframe. And don't have to pay it.
This would be a recommendation?
No, if, if he's wanting to do the bill of assurance, he'll have to go to council.
So called.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Count?
Yes.
Isai?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Okay, we need to work on that two year bill of assurance, so if you call us at ten ten. Okay, then, that's the only addition, he would still pave that that's up next to his building.
South row, sidewalk.
Uh huh, south row and the sidewalk alone. Okay. Okay, that's what the, the motion for the revised bar scale would be. Subject to staff comments, do we have any other comments before I get with this thing again? Oh, sorry, I forgot.
My only comment was that street improvements are required in the waiver.
Okay, we're good, you guys that covered it. Okay. Good with that, we need a motion to approve Lawrence.
Motion to approve, subject to their comments.
Second.
Okay. Yeah, okay, uh, Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Count?
Yes.
Isai?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Yes, next item is arts recycling phase two identified, yes, I.
This is a second phase of the development, the mission is familiar with. Basically, it was just the building along Old Israel, it's already been trans left side of that thing, which was the engine parking, and that article. Excellent area. The office mostly for other rapid drivers.
Rapid drivers, meaning the cars to be parked there, not uh, trash trucks. In that part, unless there's a minority. Okay, just wanna make sure the record shows that you don't park trash trucks. Okay? Comments?
Uh, we're playing with that, spending a moment.
We hear in comments, show the sidewalk along two sixty five that was not completed in phase one, and the final locker contractor indicated that it would be completed faster.
And we did make a bond for it, so it has to be done before you can occupy the building. And as I understand it, the drive on the north side will remain the construction access and won't be paved until you're ready to ask for some of that, everything will come in and out on the south side. That's where the white station is, to go to the transfer station, and turn around and come back out of that, so construction was completed. Any other comments? There's a motion subject to staff comments. Motion by Mr. Austin. Second, so, second by Mr. Cardiel. Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Count?
Yes.
Isai?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker? Tower?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Do we know the property ownership?
No, you're okay, all this, okay.
We're gonna go back to R twenty three dash forty three Alfredo Reyes and Lantisha Hernandez. Okay, will you do the introductions again?
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. You wanna read on the property from A one to C two? The land use plan indicates commercial use for the area, the resulting requests keeping with the following goals and policies of the conference of land use plans recommended for approval, improve the city's income base and tax structure to the most healthy, stable commercial concentrations and first development of a wide range of commercial developments for the recent in terms during three ninety, we need relationship. Any comments from the audience? From the commission? This is a call for that. Also about by Mr. Parker? Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Count?
Yes.
Isai?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Definitely, definitely prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty sixth, please keep in mind, you can't use it for commercial use until you get a wise development, clean, proven of these properties. You can't park dump trucks on there, or anything like that, until you get a wise development. Okay? Thank you. Uh, we need a break. Break. Our next item, Howell family rental trust, presented by Satterfield Land Surveyors. Hello, could you tell us a little bit about who you are first?
Dana Rosen was Satterfield Land Surveyors. They're asking for a variance on the uh, rear set back because of the existing building and the variance on the front yard setback, the porch on the existing house.
This is a piece of property that was split by uh on Tyson Park Lane, and so it's existing condition, very good.
Yes.
Do we have any comments? This is a call for the road?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Cloud. And we're taking both these together?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Count?
Yes.
Isai?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Count?
Yes.
That's it, thank you. Next item is L D Gibson Properties LLC, presented by Larry Gibson.
You're in the right place, you're in the right place, Larry.
Howdy.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Could you tell us a little bit about what you're planning to do?
Sure, um, it's, we've owned this property, uh, I would have never asked this question had Mike Shandling not challenged me on it, but we've owned the property since two thousand fourteen, nine years, February. I bought it for my wife as a Valentine's present, in February of two thousand fourteen.
Larry, are you asking for a variance? Sorry, I don't think you can grant you me a variance because of that.
Not at all, um, we uh, parking's a little bit of an issue. Uh, we, we just I'm old and, and, and we're trying to downsize frankly, and I wanna sell this property. It's gonna be a lot easier to sell it, sell one and then sell the other two together than it is to sell all three.
Okay, it's zoned.
I do. I do.
So it is a non-conforming use.
Yeah.
And you're asking us to make the non-conforming use worse by creating two lots? Why didn't you rezonate?
What, what, what?
Why didn't you rezonate to, to a residential use?
When we, when we, when we bought it, or?
Or now, when you want to split it instead of asking for variances, because it's an industrial piece of property?
I can't answer that, that's, it had never been in my mind.
What, do you intend to sell it for, as commercial property or as industrial property?
We intend to sell the house that we're gonna split off of its gates address, as one and the other two together, it couldn't be sold, it couldn't be sold. But I think, I think the difference in space between the house that faces the twelve sixteen crucher and twelve sixteen and a half crucher is less than six feet.
I think she's asking, are you gonna sell them both, are you gonna sell them as residential house?
I am, yeah, that's my intention, yeah, I'll sell them as whatever they want. I'm gonna try and get, I'm gonna try and get the price wrong, but if they wanna sell it, push them all three down, they can have right at it.
Well, the, the question in my mind is, we're making the non-conforming worse by banking it two lots instead of one lot, and we don't normally allow for a non-conformity to be expanded like that. Doesn't make any sense.
I, I understand, we, uh, I was, I was talking to somebody out, I was talking to your young lady, sitting out here at the table, and I it never crossed my mind, because this is such an anomaly, as you well know.
Yeah.
Uh, the only other property, there's, there's, there's two owners of property between Gate Street and Sunset, between Crucher and North Turner. That's me, and whoever owns that big ball corporation plant, not right next to me, those three houses and that plant, that's all that's on that, all that's on that parcel plant, that's it. So I have no excuse but to say rezoning is differently, never occurred.
Well, I, I, I can one have a hard time supporting a variance that makes the non-conforming worse than what it is today, because it's not zoned for residential use.
Is it not, I mean, I know it.
So what lot sizes are you going to be able to accomplish? Uh, if you split the two, the one on the west side, how wide is it? I can't read the numbers, someone will have to read them too.
On the west side?
Yeah, the one on the west side.
Eighty seven.
So it's eighty seven, so that would meet
Not quite, not quite eighty seven, that's to the block house there, so that property line is actually shorter than that, so it's probably more like seven.
Well, an S F two takes seventy foot of frontage on a public street and eight thousand square feet. So you don't have enough square footage, but you have enough um, frontage on a public street. um, frontage on a public street. The other one, you have two lots on fourteen thousand nine hundred or two structures on fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty eight, but you have adequate frontage. And what's that square in the middle? Go back to that.
It's that block building right there.
No, no, go back to the drawing again. See that square that has twenty five foot rear building setback fifty foot? That's where you could build any structure and you're building.
According to the I two.
You could put a
What's where we got it? Did that's one of them?
The dash line.
Can you put your mouse on your cursor?
Somebody do that. Okay, can't see it over there. I, it's very confusing what we're trying to accomplish.
The dotted line?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, what is that? Well, it's got a front setback, it's got a side setback, it's got a rear setback, as if it had two fronts.
Is that a drawing on the, on the, on the, on the
Yeah.
On the, whatever.
You submitted.
Jane Buscher did for me. Is it on? It is?
Yeah. We didn't, we didn't create anything for you. This, this kind of words.
I don't know what, I don't know what that is.
Well, it's nothing.
I think if we're going to, I think if we're going to give their residences and that's what they're, that's what they are now. That's what we're going to be. That's what we're splitting them up to do. I think we should probably true up the zoning at this time or because what I worry is not about you, it's who buys this from you, who buys a very small I one, you know, industrial lot that you otherwise would not find anywhere. And they stick something in that house that we wouldn't normally, you know what I'm saying? This we're making this anomaly worse by giving somebody the opportunity, I think, to buy an I one lot that we normally wouldn't find.
I don't know how much product I, I'd be perfectly godly. I'm sure. I know that I have, and I don't pretend it to you, but I, I'd say it at all. I don't even know how much land there. How much land is it? Nobody's going to put chickens or or make cans or anything on that piece of property. They couldn't possibly.
Well.
How much land is?
I mean, track one, it looks like is around seven thousand square feet. Part two is fifteen thousand square feet.
But almost. Is real?
Yeah, it's all right, happening.
So.
So we're just making the nonconformity worse by allowing it to be split and creating variances to allow the parking to continue. What can continue as a nonconforming use says it is until you figure out what you want to do with it. If one of those houses get destroyed, they can't get back. Because or they are empty for more than six months, you can't put them back. Because it's zoned out too. So you need to rezonate. And then we address it with a rezoning and some variances for residential lots. Or you leave it as one track until it decides to. That would be my, my recommendation that you need to decide what you want to do with it and not split it unless we rezonate.
So I can't sell these houses for somebody else to rent them to somebody else as they sit?
As long as they do not shut down for more than six months. If your renter leaves and it's eight months from now before somebody buys it and moves in, they can't move back in because it is a nonconformity on any of those structures.
So there's nothing to keep me from selling all three of them as they sit.
Exactly.
Unless your buyer needs it to be residential or multifamily.
Sounds like his problem.
Well, he may not buy it from you till you get it rezoned.
Yeah, that's a good point. So I, I didn't, I, like I said, I didn't, it never occurred to me.
Yeah.
To rezonate. But I mean, we could, we can, we can skin this pad another way. I'll sell, I'll sell, bring them together back.
Okay, let's just we're going to table this and you decide what you want to do.
Okay.
Okay.
Could I possibly get back on October's or is it too late for that?
You are tabled to rezonate?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, yes. The submission deadline is, somebody tell me. No other month.
Yeah, that's that's somewhere around there.
Yeah.
One day.
You got plenty of time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And suffice it to say that, that, I mean, if that's if that's the only choice that I have and rezoned, I mean, I don't want to, I don't waste your guys' time. I don't want to waste my time in having to come back up here and say, well, or
Yeah, you've got till the third page to read the next.
I, I just, I don't want to have, Matty, I don't, you guys don't need to waste your time. I don't want to waste my time coming back here and say, you guys say, sorry.
Okay, well, come in and rezonate. And one very rezonate, that's it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item is Kevin and Lucia Wang, presented by Kevin and Lucia Wang.
We titled it, leave your way, draw on. However, not really sure, but yours is easier listening that way.
Okay. So I'm the owner of this beauty salon along with my wife. We want to install a six foot tall fence or on that exhibit A, the red line. Uh, main purpose is to block that dumpster that's next door, the apartment complex. We get a lot of trash mainly, and then just the look of the
That dumpster is just right there in the way.
Oh, my wife knows it. So, yeah, yeah.
So you put a wooden fence or
It's a white vinyl. If you want to tell them that looks nice.
When you go to the drawing, the areas that are red will have the white vinyl. The rest of the green will be the
You get a lot of traffic walking through it. So the black chain link is just who's doing it, yeah.
And that height would be from three feet to six feet on that corner by the dumpster, but it doesn't block any of the sidelines to be able to pull in and work the drives.
Okay, any questions? Comments? This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Everywhere.
That's all.
Call for the vote by Mr. Austin.
That worked. Okay. Um, Cardio?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Count?
Yes.
The same?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Next item is Julio and Josefina Reyes presented by for Williams. Okay. Next item was Williams Tractor presented by USI.
And that's for USI. It's the revision to your prior large scale development of Williams Tractor. They are, looking at what you explained. The gravel area and where they are planning the story to be buried. People that extract. To account for this, we are supporting modifications to the village bond. Show there's upright.
Okay, do you have any problems with modifications to the extension for this? No future building going on that one side. Now. Good answer. Good answer.
Any other comments, questions? This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Shannon.
Call for the vote.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Count?
Yes.
The same?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardio?
Yes.
It'd be nice if you could gravel down and move those. And then that sort of sports field right now.
Look at all of this.
Thank you.
Next item is Ethan and Michelle Pennington presented by Ethan and Michelle Pennington. Mr. and Mrs. Pennington, can you come to the podium? Tell us a little note about what you want to do.
So, um, I got a permit to build a, an office shed in my backyard. And, um, registered DIY builders, and so we had not taken into account the overhang of the roof when we put the fittings in for the shed and so then when we had a fittings inspection that wasn't brought to our bench neither. And so the next inspection was when they came out to do the whole frame and rough and that's we said, oh, it's overhanging, it's encroaching on the setback. So you need to look for it. So that's why we're here today. Hopefully you'll help us out.
You said an office?
Yes.
That's a home office. You have a business license for a home office?
Um, I don't have a business office. I'm just an author. So it's going to be multi-purpose. I just call it.
Okay, don't call it an office.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's a shed in the back.
It's not going to be commercial, no customers.
It's not an office. We don't like that town. Let's try to strike that office from the
I refer to the
It's definitely I can
Yes. Okay.
Any other comments, questions? This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote on Mr. Parker.
Compton?
Yes.
Count?
Yes.
The same?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yeah.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardio?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
That analogy just makes a big difference.
I understand. I get that. I'm sorry. It's not
We're good. We got it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item is Vic Enterprises LLC presented by Vic Enterprises. Title this?
Yeah. Yeah.
Next item is Eden and Lizbeth Tanguma. Could you come to the podium? Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Uh, we're trying to request an increase on the bed, bed height on the back, only the back or the back portion of the lot, I guess where the red is highlighted. Uh, just for, you know, the, the way the lot was split and just for added privacy. That's what we're trying to do.
Anybody got any issues to discuss? No. Thank you.
This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Austin.
Count?
Yes.
The same?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardio?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Waivers. Next item is the title presented by USI.
Here comes Zach.
Brandon Rush with the
Zach Brothers. I'm one of the developers. Uh, we met with the staff and, uh, we believe that we satisfied their concerns by adding a sidewalk. And, uh, we're requesting a waiver of the additional street improvements to help our development blend with the existing neighborhood and to retain as much green space as possible.
Any issues? And staff supports the waiver of the previous premise as long as we got a stop. Okay, we're good. This would be a recommendation to cancel the waiver to council.
So recommended.
Motion by Mr. Cloud. Throw this back in.
Second.
Second, uh, Mr. The same.
The same?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yeah.
Austin?
Yeah.
Cardio?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Count?[1696.03]